Legislator Burnes.
Yep.
Legislator Gilbert.
Here.
Legislator Chartren.
Here.
Legislator Morehan.
Here.
Legislator Calzer.
Here.
Legislator Osborne.
Here.
Legislator King.
Here.
Legislator Dahlhoff.
Here. Please stand and comply. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The six one twenty twenty one board meeting minutes have been distributed and if there are no amendments or corrections, they stand approved. Reported the Finance and Rules Committee Rule Six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance and Rules Committee has met and they recommend to waive rules to act upon the resolutions.
Need motion? Greg, second by Ryan. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries. Privilege of the floor. Is there anyone here that would like to make any comments? If not, at this time, we'll leave that open. Presentation of petitions, communications, and notices.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Village of Lobel Mayor submitted a letter to the Board of Legislators outlining the Phase Two upgrades of their sewer plant and asking the county to waive the $20 surcharge for sludge. Schuler County submitted a copy of their letter to New York State Governor Andrew Cuomo explaining the devastating effects of Senate Bill S. seventy-one ninety-six and Assembly Bill A. sixty-seven sixty-two, which seeks to impose liability on law-abiding businesses and individuals for the criminal misuse of firearms. An email was received from Mr. Aaron Ross, who asked the Board of Legislators to raise the smoking age to twenty-five, citing the effect will galvanize the tobacco twenty-five movement and save thousands of lives. That's the end of the report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Reports of county officers and departments.
Legislators received a monthly treasurer's report, second quarter bed tax report, and highway and solid waste June audit reports. That concludes the report.
Thank you. Reports outstanding committees. Tom, would you like to start it off with finance and rules?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to authorize County Attorney Joan McNichol to contract with Larson Engineers to provide professional consulting on the production of the county's solar array and determine any outstanding monies due to the county from Green Skies and/or National Grid at a cost of $5,000.
Move by Tom, second by Phil. Any discussion? Dick.
Yeah, I'd like to enter into the minutes, the amount of work that one of our legislators so had, what he put into bringing this to the attention of us so that we can look into this and try to get this right. Yeah. Well, I thank you for that, but I have to say that if Eric hadn't had it in one of his reports at one time and then Larry had said, "Well, Phil, does that sound right?" I said, "No, that didn't sound right." So that's what prompted it. So they, those do need to be recognized as well. Well, thank Tom for bringing it to your attention. Well, I feel like my laugh. Just kidding, just kidding, Larry. That's fine, Phil. And you wouldn't know where we're at, so.
They're impressed with his spreadsheets, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to add one thing to that. Joan and I talked to Green Skies on May eleventh, and the May production was the second highest since we've had that array. The first highest was the first full month in two thousand and eighteen, and then the next one was this previous May. So obviously, they, and they sent us spreadsheets that were even better than mine, Larry, that, and they acknowledged that they had a bigger loss than what I had been showing. So they're acknowledging the loss, and evidently, they had done something to correct the situation because that was some serious production they had in May. I haven't seen June yet, but I don't know that shortly. Anyway, I just wanted to add that.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have, just time, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Tom? Thank you, Tom. We'll move on to Jerry with General Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have four motions. I'll make the first on motion to authorize Buildings and Ground Supervisor Matt O'Connor to put out an RFP for driveway repair on Osceola Tower Site.
Move by Jerry, second by Andrea. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, second motion to authorize Highway Superintendent Timothy Haunt to put out an RFP for snow plowing services on all county-owned parking lots.
Move by Jerry, second by Dick. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sure, Andrea, opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to authorize Planning Director Cassandra Beal to put out an RFP for housing needs assessment.
Move by Jerry, second by Phil. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, motion to waive $20 ton surcharge fee on waste sludge for the Village of Lobel with respect to Phase Two upgrades for their sewer plant.
Move by Jerry, second by Dick. Discussion?
We've done this before.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Jerry? Greg?
Since this is probably better under General Services, I'd like to make a couple motions to report actions. I'd like to make a motion to authorize County Attorney Joan McNichol to prepare and submit appropriate RFPs for the removal of any hazardous or non-hazardous materials from the Turner Brick Block Building after receipt and review of the testing results performed by EPA.
Move by Greg.
First off, we are going to amend the...
I have a second motion.
You can only do one at a time, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but...
Should have done the first.
My point is, yeah, we don't, do we want to do the RFPs or do we want, I suppose we would have Dank draft the RFPs and then we would formalize them?
Yeah, they would assist and formalize it and cover all the specifics.
That's motion two.
Yeah.
I'll do the motion number two then.
Wait, we got a board on this one yet, so. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. Are we waiting on stuff for, from other groups?
We still have to have a formal letter from the EPA advising us of...
The EPA is going to do a formal written report on the twenty-four tests that they did on the site with everything down. They had some informal discussion with the mayor and some others from the village and town, but they will put it into a formal report so that we know what exactly they found, if anything, whether or not it's hazardous, whether or not any hazardous material is in just a limited location so that we know what kind of RFPs and what kind of assistance the village and the county and Dank will, what we'll put together to try to have it removed and cleaned up.
Well, and I got one more question until we hear back from them, that we know all we can send up for an RFP.
No, and that's, yeah, and that's what Greg has said, that subject to what we receive from the report from the EPA.
We can't do, we can't come up with a plan until we do this, the guidelines that we have to operate on, basically.
But we want it ready to go, basically.
Right.
Because so far, they've come up with twelve test results, and they're all negative for asbestos, basically the first. There's twelve more out there. The Town Supervisor Jane Gillette has been in contact with the EPA person twice now, and she will get her report out ASAP so that we can get this going. This is just a tremendous mess. So far, the bricks came back negative, so.
Well, we need a formal statement.
Right, I understand that.
Because the next step is you have to go to DDC and get a beneficial use determination in order to leave them on site, so. So what you're trying to do was get this moving so we don't have to wait till our next meeting in August.
Right, right.
When we get it, we'll be ready to draw up the RFP.
Right.
Not before, but...
Right.
After all the information we need.
Yeah, get her to go.
All right.
Because it looks like, you know, possibly, there won't be much problem, and possibly even our own people can do it, which has cut the cost quite a bit. That's, to have it ready to go, because, I mean, it's a terrible mess up there. It's actually almost into the street. That's how close it is. And people are going on there, and kids are going, picking bricks and building ramps and jumping their bikes off it.
Well, who's going to own that, actually, clean it up?
I assume we put it on the...
It's going to go on the tax owner's property bill, and then we will probably end up owning it at April closure.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll give the second one. Should have been the first one, I guess. Motion to amend the February second, two thousand and twenty-one contract with Dank to authorize professional assistance in creating the appropriate RFPs for the removal of materials in the Turner Brick Block Building, assisting in the bidding analysis and recommendations. Should have been first, but it was second.
At what cost?
Move by Greg. Second by...
I didn't see very well that contract, though.
The, the original contract, they were, could receive up to $5,000 for the first phase. We have a credit to us, because they haven't used it all up because the fire happened. We have a credit of about $2,300. I think they're estimating this phase could go on about, again, depending upon what kind of RFPs we have to send out and how many of them for different kinds of work based upon hazardous, non-hazardous. It could be about seven to eight thousand dollars total.
I got no problem with it. I was just really just curious.
So we have credit, and in fact, in that original resolution, seven thousand of it was to go for the structural analysis, which was never done, so that funding is still there.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carries. Okay, move on to Andrea with Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a motion, and it is a motion to spend up to $5,000 to make social media videos about mental health issues with funding to come from the community services budget lines.
Move by Andrea, second by Lisa. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Andrea? Thank you, Andrea.
I would just like to say that I hope we use individual people in these videos and not so much people with a label.
Are you volunteering?
I could. I could, whether it's counselors, but I think people understand a regular person if we can get people to do that.
Makes sense. Okay, moving on to Dick, as the board's rep on the hospital board.
Yes, Chairman, I've got a couple of things. First off, we had a briefing at our meeting about the CNAs and the LPN recruitment process and the new wage structure that I'm sure people have seen already in the newspapers and stuff for our CNAs. And I want to note that CNAs do is very important and very needed, and as far as I'm concerned, a very hard work. I personally don't think I could do that day in and day out. We were having no luck at holding CNAs, and money is only a piece of it, but it's a piece that wasn't there, and now it is, so we'll see what that does. Since that was announced, we've received twenty-eight applications, which is a total of twenty-four CNAs and four LPNs respectively. And some of the other hospitals are following suit a little bit, so we're going to still be a little bit ahead of that, so that should help. And we've got two more CNA classes to run this year. We're having Jessica Skip and Michelle Prince assist in the interview process because of the potential size of the candidate's class. And if this works, it'll create a better work-life balance for the staff, because right now there's a lot of overtime being worked and a lot of personal time that they need for their families being missed because they're working a lot of overtime. Then we also had a briefing on the surgical pavilion and our capital project, and we're supposed to get a question and answers from the Stif and Need Unit by DOH on this project. July twenty-ninth this year is the key date for this project, because that's when the Stif and Need will be reviewed by Public Health Council. He also shared a list that Los Grande General Health Systems' critical access hospital recertification has been achieved retroactive July of 2020 through December of 2023. Work still has to continue, however, on the primary and secondary road definition for critical access hospitals. We're working with at least upon and can our government elected officials to get that The board approved that Jerry Kair, the CEO, can enter into an agreement with Whit Keifer for the recruitment of a new chief operations officer for Los Grande General Health System. Michelle Prince is retiring in November of this year, and this individual will replace that part. And then, there's no Board of Managers meetings in July or August, however, our committee meetings, like we have here, will continue through July or August. That concludes my report. Brian, any questions?
Any questions for Dick? Thank you, Dick. County Manager report, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ken Bass.
I'll keep it quick. The solid waste project is moving right along. If you go by there, you'll notice that the new road is cutting that we'll be using to, basically, the new traffic flow. So that's been done by Tim's department at the highway. They did a wonderful job. The foundation for the new building has been dug, and you'll start seeing concrete and steel this week, so they're moving right along, still on pace for an October completion. You may have seen on the news that we did have an issue with a road on River Road in the town of Harrisburg. We were actually working on, there's two twin bridges there, both are wooden bridges, and our crews were working on the second bridge this summer, and we had some consultants there, and we asked them to take a peek onto the first bridge and take a look at it, and they found some things that they felt were not so safe. So Tim will have a full report on that issue for the committee meeting on the nineteenth, but we have a pretty good solution, I think, lined up at this point, and I think it'll all work out for the best. But for now, that road is closed for that portion that has the bridge on it. You should have each received your 2020 audits. They were in the mailbox. I see most of you guys have grabbed those. We, once again, were issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean bill of financial health. We've, every year that I've been here, we've been given an unmodified audit, so kudos to Eric and his team, and Cassandra, and everyone that audits, and all of our financial staff throughout the county. They're, you know, clearly putting things where they belong. We will have the auditors here at our July Finance and Rules Committee meeting, so they'll go through the audit with you guys, and they'll be available for any questions. NISAC, this year, their fall conference is going to be in Syracuse, which is good news. So September thirteenth through the fifteenth, if anybody wants to go, we certainly have funds in the budget for legislative travel expenses. So if anybody's interested, please let Mira Cassandra know. We can get a complete list of folks that want to go down to Syracuse the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth. And then the last thing on my list is that I talked to Matt earlier today, and I talked to district attorney. They're done using this space for grand juries, and so we'll be putting your configuration back to what you're used to in August, so nobody has their back to anybody. So I figured you'd be happy to hear that. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Any questions for Ryan? Thank you, Ryan.
I'm Sergeant. Now, Ryan, there was a question about the meeting location for either the next, your August or September set, so have you got any update on that?
Yes, we should be in West Lyden. Do you know which month?
I don't know. It's whatever you guys want to set it, but the broadband should be sufficient up there.
So we're good with the site. We're going to be at the fire hall. We just, whatever you guys want to do for the location. Or, I'm sorry, whatever, do I do for month? Location set for month?
That may be a difference. Whatever's for that work? For notices, Joan?
Yes, that's plenty of time.
Okay, September?
Need a motion.
Need a motion to...
Convo was talking to the fire department that night.
Okay, okay. So who's making the motion?
Dick made the motion.
Dick, second. Okay. Move by Dick, second by Phil. Any further discussion? To have the meeting held in West Lyden on September.
Are we going to rent a bus?
That would be appropriate.
We can.
We got a bus driver, so. We should be good.
I think we will.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
You got to come halfway.
Okay, move on to the County Treasurer report. Eric, please.
Yes, thank you. I provided you a written report. I'll add a couple of notes to that. Sales tax receipts, as you see, continue to be strong. We did have some other collections late in June and early July, and those also strong. We are twenty-four percent over where we were last year through those June and, late June and July collections, about over $7 million to the, to the first six months of the year. Any cheering, Phil?
Oh, I know.
It's a, it's a great, a great trend to see, definitely.
It certainly is.
I wanted to note our health insurance fund cash balance, you can see on there, we have decreased quite, quite a bit since the beginning of the year, which, again, is kind of a planned decrease that balance had been creeping, so we're trying to bring that back down to a more manageable number. Ryan noted or commented on our auditors coming in the month of July, so I think just a couple of notes from myself, that, I mean, it's a lengthy audit report, so you can't get through it in ten minutes. You could, but there's a lot to absorb there, so if you get some time, do take a look at that in advance of their presentation, and I see those really as a good opportunity for you, you know, to learn a little bit about all the paper that's there and ask them questions, and definitely hope you will, you will do that. They, they will tend to go through their presentation pretty quickly, but don't hesitate to ask them questions and see what else you can dig out of that information. We are planning in the month of August to have three plus one, the investment consultants come and make a presentation to the Finance and Rules Committee also. We've been working with them actively over the last about eleven months now. It's going very well, and I think that will be an interesting report for you also. And two notes I would give you on the federal American Rescue Plan funding. The county did receive our initial share, I think about three weeks ago. Really, I was surprised by the turnaround. I think they, you know, commented it would come within a couple of weeks, and it did. So we received a little over $2.5 million. The second fifty percent will come a year from now, so now we need to continue to move forward with documenting the need and then reporting, further reporting for, to justify those funds. And I think I included you on an email that our audit firm is doing a webinar presentation this Friday for focus on towns and villages and their RPA funding. I don't have the list with me, but we've had good response to that. I think we're got probably, I would say, eight to ten towns and villages at least represented, represented probably close to twenty people who are going to be participating so far, so.
Diana was appreciative of that.
Sounds good. I've definitely gotten good feedback. If you have any question, if one of your towns or villages is not replied, let me know. They, they won't all participate, I'm sure, but it's, they've been responsive so far. That's all I have.
Questions for Eric?
Eric, and the health insurance fund now, when we give the employees and the county a big outbreak, how much does that, how much does that take out of the account?
I won't be able to give you the exact off the top of my head, Greg, but I think employer portion, I think county and hospital is close to a million dollars. Employee share, I can't quote that one. It's less than that.
Less than a million.
Significantly less, because we're about...
The breakdown is seventy-five, twenty-five, so it's a million. You're at two fifty for the employees or...
Yeah, that's probably in the ballpark, so, yeah, again, the county and hospital employer share is close to a million dollars.
Are we planning on doing another month?
Not planning on another one this year per current discussion, and I don't know, given the balance, that, that we would recommend that at this point, but we'll continue to, you know...
We use a six point three. We were looking at five being a good round number.
Right, and our, our committee continues to talk about that. I think we're, you know, the amount that we've decreased it this year has been relatively aggressive, so I, I don't think we would recommend another month, but we'll, as I said, we'll definitely continue to do that and, and make sure that we're, we're reaching, getting towards that goal.
Our, just to add to that, our actuaries and excelants who we work with feel that there's some healthcare slack in the market still from the pandemic, so a lot of people put things off, and so what we're thinking is that you'll see this balance go down even more over the next few months, because a lot of our, our folks have probably avoided healthcare settings during the pandemic, and as they feel more comfortable, they'll start going in again. So we'll keep an eye on it and see where we are. You know, when we start doing budget in, in like September, October, we might talk about budgeting another, you know, putting in the budget another holiday for next year, so.
What are your questions? Do you have any time?
Jerry?
I guess I have a question. For your two and a half million, you said you were getting what you could spend it on. Is there a lot of restrictions or is it pretty broad?
I'd say the, the guidance is broad. I mean, we do have to justify, there are certain categories of how we justify it, and then, as you've seen, the, the programs that we have outlined, in general, will all fall into the guidelines. Again, we, we are going to justify it in one manner, looking at revenue losses, and then I think the programs that we're intending to use it for all fit within the guidelines also.
Because the villages and towns have a pretty narrow window, it looks like.
Yeah, I think there's maybe a little narrower. Probably the biggest one for them, and Ryan could add this, is infrastructure. I wouldn't be surprised if most of them will use that.
I think towns will struggle because many of our towns don't have water sewer, so, you know, they can use it on streets, sidewalks, that type of thing. There's still quite a bit of debate on that. My opinion is the feds have left some areas intentionally broad. They want people to spend it, but there's one category that's pretty broad, it just says economic development. I mean, you could argue a lot of things improve the community economic development of your, of your town. economic development of your town, so, you know, those will be good questions for the auditors to ask.
Thank you. Good. Report of the finance and rules committee for rule seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the finance and rules committee reports that they have examined the claims presented for payment in a total amount of one million fifty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, and recommend that they be audited and allowed for the amounts claimed.
Need a motion? Ryan, second by Jerry, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. So moving on to resolutions, you have a list of what we need to pull from the slate?
Yes, so we will be pulling one forty out of the slate, number one forty-seven, and number one sixty-seven.
Anyone have any others? If not, need a motion to pass the majority of them as a slate, moved by Ryan, seconded by Greg, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, resolution one forty is auditing and allowing claims in the amount of one million fifty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Moved by Phil, seconded by Greg, any discussion? Rule call, please.
legislator Gilbert?
Yes.
legislator Moirhan?
Yes.
legislator Burkler?
Yes.
legislator Osborne?
Yes.
legislator Hathaway?
Yes.
legislator King?
Yes.
legislator Burns?
Yes.
legislator Chartren?
Yes.
legislator Colzer?
Yes.
and legislator Dahlhoff?
Yes.
And carries. Next is one forty-seven.
The next one is one forty-seven, resolution adopting county vehicle use policy.
Moved by Jerry, seconded by Andrea, discussion?
Yeah, I had back in the back for three dollars a day, take a vehicle home. That doesn't seem right.
So Andrea had asked, came in earlier and asked me that question, we looked it up, so we had originally taken that from Green County, another county that had a similar policy, but Green County in fact got it from the IRS, so it is the IRS rate, the IRS commuter rate?
So essentially what we're doing, first takes car home, depending where they live, we're actually paying for fuel and stuff like that. Three dollars a day.
And insurance?
And insurance, wear and tear on the vehicle and everything else.
All your changes.
So I guess my concern is, is then why is the value of the vehicle, they're not having to drive back and forth to get to work, what the cost is, three dollars a days. Well, we don't even break even there.
Well, I'm not sure.
And you guys pay fifty-six, or fifty cents a mile, when like you used to, I drive my vehicle, so there's a big discrepancy there.
I'm not sure if I'm following your question, but let me explain how I think that works, and everybody else can chime in too, if they take one of our vehicles home, what, the three dollars a day is an amount, IRS established amount, that we report to the IRS as a benefit to them, so instead of them driving their vehicle, they got to benefit by driving our vehicle, and we have to report that to the IRS, so it becomes, it becomes an additional income that they get taxed on.
Right, but it's more than three dollars a day.
Can't argue with that, that's, but that's the IRS allowed amount.
Why are we even doing it then? I'm not giving you a hard time, I'm just trying to understand.
And I'm trying to understand how you're, I'm trying to understand how you're thinking of that.
Originally when we put this together, and I made you think wrong, we didn't want the cars to go home and stay all night and have you, so, because people shop out, and they do this and that, and as far as I'm concerned, when they're home, we're not watching them, so they could be using them for more than driving back and forth.
Yeah, so again, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just thinking.
I know that's some of the jay is the furnished cars and engineers that had those cars, but theirs, yours, you personally were paying six, seven hundred dollars a month, or getting taxed at that rate.
So again, I'm just thinking aloud here, so again, we, there's two things going on here, they're driving one of our vehicles and we're incurring costs for that, no doubt about it, and the cost is likely more than three dollars per day.
Right, if they're not working, why?
If they're not working, no.
Get to and from work, maybe I'm looking at it wrong too, but the thing is, if it was the other way around, they'd have to use their personal vehicle to get to work, like everybody else does, and to get home, well, most vehicles, even my wife's vehicle, at thirty miles a gallon, it's going to cost me two gallons of gas to get home, so that's six dollars.
Jerry, in order to take the car home in the first place, they have to meet the parameters of this policy, they, you know, they have to have a legitimate reason, so, you know, that's only the rate, and I'm not sure we can change that.
No, we can't change that rate, and yes, that's just, that's just a piece of this policy, yeah.
In order to take the vehicle, well, in order to take the vehicle home, they still have to meet the, all the criteria that's in this use policy.
But this is going to be, that's based on, correct me if I'm wrong here, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, that they got to get permission each time they take it home, it's not blank of policy where it stays home all the time.
There's five, six, seven employees that are given blanket permission in here, everyone else is going to have to go through the process, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have to read it in its entirety and jump in if you want, but.
No, I've read the whole thing.
Jerry, just like, the IRS provides three options in addressing valuation and taxation of employees provided vehicles, the next thing that you're reading are three options, so you have one, two, or three, I believe, for options, is that not sort of what that's saying? How you choose which one, I'm not sure, but it's given you three options to put, to kind of read that, and you have to first be a twenty-four hour community use category person, it says the first time, so, I don't think it's going to, anybody who wants their car home for three dollars, I don't think that works by that way.
Yeah, option two says cents per mile, based on the standard mileage rate, so, depending on how far away they live, would probably be more than three dollars.
Right, on the personal miles, including free miles for the driver, so that way, that means that they are able to use the vehicles for personal use too, though. Is it all personal miles?
I'm just asking, so.
Because I know that's how some of the industry does it, I mean, the farming inspectors, they have a car, but it ends up being like a six or seven thousand dollar per, you know, that's added to their, they're getting a ten ninety-nine for that.
Yeah.
But it's not real pleasant, you get that at the end of the year, with our.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments? All favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Show Phil opposed, motion carries.
The last resolution is resolution authorizing acceptance and appropriation of American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 funds.
Someone like to move it? Lisa, seconded by Ian.
Yeah, I have, I guess I have a question concerning how much, where we're distributing this money into the different categories here, I still believe that recreate, I believe recreation needs money, of course, but I'm not so sure I can, I'm so enthusiastic about a million and a half dollars, fine with a million, I'm looking at like, could we put five hundred thousand of it for infrastructure repairs, I mean, we've got, we've got some infrastructure out there that needs help, we can dress it, and maybe we could get to it a little bit quicker using this, and come up, you know, that way it takes care of, just like the Harrisburg bridges there, there's one, but we've got, we've got another one, people are traveling fifteen, twenty miles that other way, gets to work, so, I mean, we probably could use some of that funding that way, to help with those type of situations where it just pops up, I'm sure there's a lot of them, if you went and drove around, they would pop up, you know, I'm just looking to change that number, drop it down, still be quite a significant amount of recreation, and still give us a little something to, you know, put forward with infrastructure repair. That's up for debate.
Yeah, it will be up for debate still, because none of this is set in stone, we're just.
Once it gets, once it gets past this, usually it's never seen again.
It's all done, we said.
By resolution.
You could stick out that whole clause, it wouldn't affect what we're doing right now, but, I mean, I expect we'll go through each item, you know, piece by piece, before we appropriate anything.
Any other comments? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Show Greg opposed, motion carries. Do we have any other business? Phil?
Ryan, when we were talking about renovation projects, and you kept saying you got the money, and I had to go through it to see that we had the money, and I did, and it worked, and at some point you said, well, you did your due diligence, and now you proved to us, whatever, well, based on that, I think that regarding double play, I think it's great that we're even thinking about spending that amount of money, that we should do our due diligence on that, and I would like to make a motion that we hire an outside person to audit double play books for the last five years, it will, it might do the same thing that you did for me, or it might not, but we don't know, you know, and we need to know if we're going to be spending that amount of money, I, not necessarily for spending that amount of money, don't get me wrong there, but, but I think to do, to do the right thing, we should audit their books and we should have an independent person doing it.
That's a motion. That's a motion. Second, Ian Greer, any discussion, further discussion?
I would just add that I had a similar discussion with double play, where I asked for their most recent audit, and they're a nonprofit that's below the threshold of needing annual audits, so they didn't have a recent audit, I think it's a good idea to verify what they, you know, they're, basically what we have is their annual reports, and we can verify what they've got, so, we probably would have made them do it anyway, so.
Well, it will help us in our decision making, and they need to open the vote, you know, to someone independent.
You think so, Larry? I'm fine with that, we're also verifying their commitment.
Larry, just a couple, a couple comments if you'll allow it, and I mean, Phil's motion was, I think, somewhat defined, I think you said five years and an audit, so what I wanted to just add in, there's, there's levels of service, an audit is the highest, a review is in the middle, and a compilation is the lowest, an audit, I'm sure they've not had an audit, as Ryan said, I've never seen one, and for the love, the size of organization they are, I can't imagine why they would have had one, an audit is going to be three, four thousand dollars per year, maybe the lowest, and it's going to go up from there, so I'm not sure how an engagement would happen if they're going to audit the last five years, I don't know how a firm would charge for that, but just so you know, typically three to four thousand a year minimum.
We're talking six and a half million dollars that.
I'm just, I'm just, so, I'm just giving you some information.
Three thousand dollars is nothing to me.
I'm just giving you some information, and I think my last thought is that, you know, double play is going to have to agree to that, you can't just ask an auditor to go audit their books and they're going to have to agree to that.
Sure. And if they don't, well, I might say something too, but, you know.
So you're saying three thousand, three to four thousand dollars a year, so that'd be fifteen thousand dollars?
It depends on how a firm might structure the engagement, I can't guarantee you they would charge that amount per year, it's also kind of unusual to go look back five years, but may, I'm not sure how a firm would approach that, just, just information.
What would a review, you know, just the cheap option right now, because if we don't even have, I mean, we could just be throwing away fifteen thousand dollars if we're not even seriously considering, maybe that's something for later on.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that I can answer that question, certainly something you'd have to talk with an audit firm and ask them.
What about a review by a CPA firm like that? Anything you could think about?
Are you asking?
Instead of, instead of a full-blown audit, would a review by a CPA accounting firm suffice?
I should think so, I guess, yeah.
Maybe, now, I mean, we can do an audit later, because maybe there, if we do, we just open their books and look at their profit and loss for these years, we may come away from it thinking we don't want anything to do with this.
Well, I'm, having been through audits with the LCDC, I understand what Eric is trying to say, there's a lot of detail in an audit that is really not relevant to this question, and it's, it costs a lot of money to get that stuff done, where they go back and track where the money came from, you know, what cash on hand, where did that come from?
It's going to be a lot of work for them too, right now.
I think part of what we're looking at is like, almost like a credit rating.
Well, I think I have to say, you know, Phil just wants to affirm that the, their statement of assets and liabilities is accurate.
Right, and are they paying their bills or whatever?
That, that's something we should do, if we're even beginning to think about it, in my opinion.
So if you're, would you be willing to change your motion from audit to review by a CPA firm, or that?
Yeah, well, it was independent, sure.
Financial review of the books and records and debt ratio of double play.
Speaking away with words, John. That's the second debt?
No, I have a question.
Okay, I need to cycle first, Ian, okay, go ahead.
Last month, I believe we were talking about, they presented us a plan of operations going forward and whatever, I'd be more interested in that, with their last five years, because that's what's going to pay this off moving forward, so if that could be included in it somehow. Well, the, I'm not a CPA, I can look at that all day long, and I can't tell you, I think it's got good places and bad places, but I'd rather have somebody that does that for a living take a look at that, than long with it just.
The, the last five years would give us a financial tracker, that.
No, I'm not against what you are, I'm just saying in addition to that.
In addition to that.
If the health staff would feel more comfortable.
In the last five years, like, what's the future one, as far as, very.
So maybe, maybe in addition to review of the five years, you would want the accountant, the firm, the firm to look at the feasibility of the plan going forward as they related, and their ability to meet those obligations.
Because I think we even asked Ryan to go back and talk to them about some of it already, so, I mean, I don't know if you've done that yet or not.
We have, so before we even got ready for this level of discussion, one of the things that I had asked for specifically was an operating budget, you know, let's say the facility is built, can you guarantee you keep the lights on? And they did provide, actually, what in my opinion, is a very detailed operating budget, and basically what they've done is they've gone through and identified each space that would be in the new facility, and they programmed that out for a year. and they've programmed that out for a year, more or less. So, if you've got a gymnasium with two half courts, you know, how much programming can you do with the staff that you have? And try to build a budget based on that. So, I think their budget is quite reasonable, but if we've got, you know, folks coming in to take a look at their, their last five years, we could easily ask them to look at the, the budget they put together going forward and, and have an opinion on that.
Sure.
So, we're going to change the motion to include that. Got to try the second for that. Andrea? Anything else? Greg?
I, just so that, you know, I've got a correspondent, it's a letter from Betty Latham. She is the, uh, she's with the Society for Preservation of West Martinsburg Church. Um, she's very, she's a, the historic, basically like the historian of Martinsburg. She's a seventh-generation Martinsburg resident. Um, the Society of, for the preservation for the West Martinsburg Church has an urgent need to restore the steeple on this historic building. This past year has been devastating, we have been unable to, of any of our annual.
I can just interrupt you. Got to get to some of that stuff.
This, this have anything to do with double play, though?
No.
Because the motion on the floor is.
Oh, you forgot to vote on it, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
All in favor of the second double play?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
So, I'm looking for some financial assistance for this, for the steeple repair. Um, the, the whole thing, the whole project would be, she told me, sixty-five thousand dollars. But they've got it in phases, and their phase one, to keep the structure from deteriorating worse than it already is, is twenty-six thousand. I wasn't looking for twenty-six thousand. I was looking for more, like, ten thousand dollars to help them with this. It's, uh, the church was built in eighteen forty, and it's one of the oldest structures in town of Martinsburg. Uh, it's on the historic registry, and it, it's just, the town has already painted the church and done the roof repair, painted the roof. Now, their project this year is to repair the town hall, the little town hall in West Martinsburg, the foundation repair, and that's going to cost somewhere around thirty thousand dollars. So, the fountain, the town of Martinsburg's actually stepped up the play financially. It has, as Jerry puts it, skin in the game, because they've done a lot of work on this, on this. And they keep their historical, um, areas up. But the cemetery right next door is on the registry, you know, it, it's just, they just need some help. You know, they can't, they can't, they haven't been able to have something, you know, their social events that's brought in. But Betty made, um, ten wreaths and sold them and threw the mercantile, the new mercantile store up there in West Martinsburg, for five hundred dollars, and that all went to this, went to this for funding of the steeple repair. They did get the bell down, so that's not there, but it's starting to leak. So, now it's, you know, slowly going to deteriorate the whole building. We really can't lose our history, because we learn from our history, that's how we know where we're going forward, so.
So, I remember this conversation previously, that they were rebuilding that church, and I thought we had contributed to.
No, that was the town hall, the Martinsburg Town Hall, we contributed to the roof repair on that. We never donated anything to this West Martinsburg Church or anything in West Martinsburg. So, they're just asking for some assistance, that's all. And I think it's worth it because it's historic. We have to keep our history. We don't, and it falls apart, and nobody ever knows there.
So, are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion to.
What you asking for?
Ten thousand. Or less, if you want to go less, Phil, that's fine.
You know, I always wanted.
I like that.
So, do I have a second for Greg's motion? Ryan? Okay. Discussion?
I, I'd like to get more information. I mean, I, maybe this can go through, would this be appropriate for Finance and Rules or General Service? This kind of thing, like, who owns the church, what's it being used for? I think that would make it a little easier. I think it's, I like what you're saying, Greg, like, I think in principle, I agree with you, but I want to know.
I don't think they're using it for anything, because of the, because of what could happen with, with the way it's in the condition.
Any prospects it could be used in the future?
Oh, absolutely, they hold their, uh, they hold the socials there. That's because they, they hold their socials there.
And me, I mean, whoever, whatever, is there an association that governs it right now?
Yeah, the West Martinsburg Preservation Society. That's who's asking, who's requesting this.
Would it sander this, uh, either the facade program, that we kind of?
That's one more, really. That's my question.
The facade, the facade program as, as we have designed it reflects a very similar program in Livingston County, which sets up defined downtown zones that are eligible. I'm not sure the four corners of Martinsburg would qualify as a downtown zone.
As a store.
But that's up to, that's up to the board. I mean, we're making this program up, so if you want to qualify, you can.
Is this something that we intended the community development to help with?
I think you, I would leave that up to the board. Community development can be anything that.
We kind, that was kind of open-ended, right? For good projects.
Sure, sure. How urgent is it, Greg? I mean, is it something we could wait and put it through the, that stimulus money, or?
Well, they need it done before we, yeah, they'd like to, you know, get some repairs done before the snowfall, because it started to leak already.
Sure.
And it was repaired two years ago, you know, just temporary, just a quick fix when they painted the roof.
So, would you be willing to withdraw the motion on the floor and, um, move forward with referring it to the Finance and Rules Committee for research and discussion?
I, I don't see why it's going to be done right now. I mean, there's not much more to.
Or we can take a motion to table it and refer it to Finance and Rules.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, can we have a second on the motion table?
I'll second that, just, you know, just, I, if we give ten thousand, limit it to thousand, it's not going to do anything. You know, I guess we just want some more information.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed to table yet and referring it to next committee? We're going to show, show Greg opposed, and.
How much more information you can get.
We'll refer it to the Committee for Research and Discussion.
Invite him out. Invite him out, Finance and Rules.
Okay, do we have any other business? Motion, no jury? Dick, second by Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Your jury.